Moving on to our next item, I am pleased to be able to share this afternoon with the board an update on the planning efforts that are underway for Henrico's first virtual academy. And so I know we have a number of presenters eager to share this presentation with you. And so Mrs. Bostain is going to kick it off, and I will turn it over to her.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. My name is Courtney Bostain, Director of Teaching, Learning, and Innovation. With me this afternoon are Dr. Dia Champ, Director of Middle School Education, and Liz Parker, Director of School Counseling, Student Support, and Wellness. Together, we will introduce the initial plan and propose next steps for Henrico's Virtual Academy as we prepare for the start of the 21-22 school year. To begin, we will start with our why. The children and families of Henrico schools, who we know rely on us to take part in a quality educational program that will prepare them to be globally competitive citizens who are life-ready. And in Henrico, we articulate this life-ready vision in our Henrico learner profile. In addition to this profile, the strategic plan provides a roadmap of ongoing opportunities for continued success and growth. And as we focus on academic excellence, we remain committed to ensuring that all students have multiple pathways to college and career readiness, and opportunities to engage in rigorous learning experiences that best meet their unique learning styles. As we all know, life changed in unprecedented ways in March of 2020. And this transformation wasn't just a radical shift from where our students learn, but how they learned. We received feedback from stakeholders that shared both ongoing challenges as well as areas of success. And while we learned that virtual learning isn't the optimal environment for every student, it is an environment where some of our learners are thriving. And as we continue to value equity and opportunity for every child in Henrico schools, we know that we must remain responsive to the needs of our students and families seeking a fully virtual alternative. To do this, a planning committee was formed that included representatives from all eight divisions of HCPS, as well as upcoming focus groups that will include input from students, families, and community members as we continue planning for next year. Throughout the project, we have embraced a "Together We Can" motto as swift preparations are being made to launch our new academy. Our presentation today will present the initial plan along with the intended next steps for any students and families interested in pursuing this fully virtual option. And while our update today is a start, we know that there are many elements that we will need to further define with our learning community as we prepare for the new school year. The new format of our school will be fully virtual. It will include a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities. In synchronous learning, students will engage in learning at the same time as their peers, just like the traditional classroom, with their cameras on while utilizing a common background. In asynchronous learning, students will have the flexibility to participate in structured learning at their own pace. At this time, Dr. Dia Champ is going to share an overview of who can enroll in HVA.
Thank you, Mrs. Bostain, and good afternoon. Any learner who is a Henrico County resident is eligible to apply to the HVA. Henrico Schools enrollment and residency policies and regulations will apply. Students interested in attending the HVA will complete a family self-reflection tool to determine if the HVA is a viable option for their family, after which they will complete the application process. It is our intent to make the application available early May 2021, and students and families opting into HVA are making a one-year commitment. Similarly to the experience in our traditional in-person school programming, the service delivery model for English learners, gifted learners, and special education students in the Henrico Virtual Academy may vary from what is provided in a brick-and-mortar school. Direct services will be provided by licensed personnel, and we want families to be aware of the service delivery models which are appropriate for a fully virtual academy before electing to pursue this option for their students. Additional guidance and information will be provided from central office representation, which will be included in the FAQs. Students who are accessing the Virginia essentialized standards of learning and have previously been supported through integrated services, specialized programming will be provided through HVA. Now, Mrs. Liz Parker, Director of School Counseling, Student Support, and Wellness, will continue with the presentation.
Thank you. The HVA will continue to empower all students who own their own journey and prepare for multiple post-secondary pathways by offering a variety of courses across all content areas. Students who attend the HVA will have the opportunity to select from an amended list of course offerings that will allow them to continue pursuing their pathways of interest while working towards either the Applied Studies, Standard, or Advanced Studies diploma. At the elementary level, students will have access to the same courses as our in-person elementary learners. These include reading, math, science, social studies, library, art, music, and health and PE. At the secondary level, students will have rigorous and engaging options for English, math, science and social studies, world languages, health and PE, fine arts, and CTE. Middle school students in the HVA on an accelerated path will have similar opportunities as their peers in the traditional setting to pursue high school credit-bearing coursework. Additionally, secondary course options at the HVA will include select honors and advanced placement courses across content areas. Interested HVA students will also still be able to participate in the specialty center application process. Accepted students who then choose to attend a specialty center, including the International Baccalaureate Program and the Gifted Young Scholars Academy, would enroll full-time, in-person to the traditional school in which the program is zoned. However, juniors and seniors who are accepted to the Advanced Career Education Center, or ACE Center, will be able to complete their one- and two-year skills-based courses in person at either Highland Springs or Hermitage ACE Centers, while also completing the remainder of their coursework virtually through the HVA. An addendum of the HCPS planning guide will be released prior to any application deadlines. For all of our course offerings, we will provide HVA students with access to the same high-quality, learner-centered curriculum that we provide for all of our students adapted for the virtual setting. As you know, our curriculum, whether virtual or in person, defines the what for teaching and learning, and ensures the vertical articulation of the knowledge, skills, and attributes students need to be life-ready. Beyond academics, HVA will remain committed to nurturing the whole child and ensuring students receive opportunities to develop cognitively, physically, socially, and emotionally. This will be embedded in the school's vision, mission, and core values, which will be developed through a collaborative process led by the school principal. We plan to provide activities and opportunities to engage the HVA families in meaningful ways. We are excited about collaborating with the school community to begin building a strong school culture for the HVA. Just as important is ensuring that students in the HVA are able to participate in co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Students interested in participating in middle school athletics, as well as Virginia High School League activities and athletics, will be able to do so in person through their zoned school. Other activities and clubs will be made available to students through the HVA itself. Additionally, students will have access to a variety of student support and wellness services, such as school counseling, school psychological services, school social work services, behavior support, and extended learning opportunities. Staffing the virtual academy will be key. Based on our last year of experience, similar to how some students are thriving in the virtual setting, many of our teachers have found virtual learning to be an ideal fit for their skill set. Each elementary school student will be assigned to a highly qualified grade-level HVA teacher who will provide instruction in all core content areas, as well as highly qualified LAMP teachers who will provide instruction in the areas of library, art, music, and health and PE. Teachers will communicate regularly with families and will work to differentiate instruction and provide a variety of strategies and interventions to support all learners, which may include online remediation sessions after school. Secondary students will be assigned to a highly qualified, subject-specific teacher for each of their courses. In addition to differentiated instruction, secondary HVA teachers may provide online tutoring sessions, conduct office hours, and communicate with students and families regularly. Teaching positions for the HVA will be posted soon, and any qualified teacher may apply. We look forward to engaging in this process in the coming weeks. The HVA will incorporate best practices for virtual teaching and learning, and once selected, HVA teachers will receive targeted support designed to help meet the unique needs, challenges, and opportunities that come with a fully virtual environment. As plans continue and more information becomes available, the Planning Committee will work with the Division of Communications and Community Engagement to prepare equitable communication across our entire learning community. This will include language, and this will include communication in multiple languages, and opportunities for our learners and their families to ask questions before applying to the HVA. And now Courtney Bostain will provide an overview of our next steps.
In summary, as we prepare to provide learners and families with this additional option for the upcoming school year, we will commit to: communicating the HVA opportunity to all Henrico stakeholders; providing students and families with an FAQ that includes a self-reflection tool to help identify if HVA is the right fit for their learning needs; engaging in an open application window, providing time for families to decide if they want to pursue the HVA for the upcoming school year; identifying students for year one; and posting the necessary teaching positions; and creating a healthy school community with a connected school culture, supported by the staff, students, and families, all as we prepare to provide a memorable experience and first day of school on September 8, 2021. And as we shared at the beginning of our presentation today, this is simply the start. We know that plans will continue to evolve and adapt based on the needs of the very reason we're designing this opportunity: the children and families of Henrico County Public Schools. We look forward to continuing this important work, and we would like to thank you and members of our Planning Committee and Task Force for their continued support. This concludes our introduction to the Henrico Virtual Academy, and at this time, we will receive any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bostain. Ms. Atkins, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper, and thank you so much for this presentation. I'm thankful for the creation of the HVA and the opportunity to offer quality options for families that want their children to learn in this way. I do want to know if you have had discussions around nutrition and how will breakfast and lunch be handled?
Great question. That is a part of our Planning Committee work, and it is in the list for us to talk about meals with our school nutrition services. So as I shared in the slide earlier, the Planning Committee includes our representatives from each division, and that is a meeting item for the Task Force. So we look forward to updating you on specifics around meals and nutrition services in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Also, for students in ACA, will they be a part of, or have the opportunity to be a part of, HVA?
So yes, that would fall under our specialty centers. And so yes, those students can certainly apply, like all students can. And then once accepted, they would actually then attend that specialty center in person and enroll in person in the schools in which the ACA is delivered.
So that collaborative effort with J. Sargent Reynolds and Henrico County Public Schools, we have confirmed that those students can attend virtual. I want to make sure I understand that.
I think, nope. Yeah, so I think what was shared related to specialty centers was that our students who would be entering the application process, so if you've attended elementary school or middle school in the Henrico Virtual Academy, you're still eligible to apply for a specialty center. But the unique programming in, let's say, ACA, or our IB program, working towards that IB diploma, some of the particular programming specialized in a number of our centers would only be available at that center. So there was a slide that talked about the offerings at secondary, and so it is a robust offering, and it does include some CTE. But, you know, certainly, we're going to work to make sure that we have a variety of options for students who choose this, but it does not replace every single specialty center option. I think that's a really good question, and so I hope that made that clear.
You did. Thank you. And it's important to understand those that, you know, may not fit into this piece. For those that are listening, I want to make sure they're clear that it's not all one-shot specialty centers. That's important to say. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell.
Yeah, it doesn't replicate the specialty center programming itself. And so, but that doesn't mean that within the specialty center at ACA or any of our other programs, there isn't potentially a digital component or a growing component to leverage virtual at times. But as far as Henrico Virtual Academy enrollment, that is separate from the specialty centers.
Wonderful. Thank you for explaining that. Also, in one of the slides, we talked about special education teleservices model. I'm interested in learning a little bit more about that model and what plans would be in place for non-verbal students, or let's say, the students that don't have that voice output device.
Sorry, I had to make the journey up. I'm so glad that you asked that, because that's been at the forefront of our decision-making. We want our virtual academy to be accessible to all of our students who are interested in this as a form of education. If students require assistive technology, things like those communication devices you spoke about, of course, we would work with them to provide either a Henrico device or support them in their use of their own personal devices. We've had tremendous success with our speech pathologists and our occupational therapists who have been providing virtual teleservices throughout the pandemic and then this year as we've dealt with COVID. The interesting thing about the virtual academy is that we don't know which students are going to be there yet, so we don't necessarily know what their needs are going to be yet. But our commitment is that as we see students who are interested and who truly believe that this is the best fit for them, that we'll do what we have to to make sure that it's accessible.
Yeah, I've received some questions about specifically around special education, and so I'm glad to hear that you're engaging in those questions, because in trying to decide if you're going to either even apply, you want to make sure that those devices, that's just one example, of course. But in thinking about sending your child, you want to know that those options are available. So I appreciate your response to that.
And Ms. Atkins, I do believe that that self-assessment that parents and families will be invited to participate in will really help them in that decision-making as to whether or not this is the best option for their student when it comes to access. So thank you for asking those questions.
Absolutely. Stay right there for one more moment. I don't want you to have to keep walking back so far. The assessment tool, is there a paper copy of that tool, or is that all online?
That is not a me question, so I'm going to step away. We are currently working with our communications department and working through our communication tool, as well as that self-assessment. And we are going to make sure that it's in multiple formats, so that all families do have access to that information.
Great. Thank you. Let's see here. And about the application process, I know you are still in discussion about the application process itself, but some of the feedback I've been hearing in many of the presentations or conversations is the word "limited," and understanding what does that really mean? I don't expect an answer, but I'm hopeful that in mentioning that to you, that you're having conversations about what exactly limited means, if that's based off of staff, which is what I am thinking, but that may not match what you're thinking as well when we say limited. So as you continue to explore and finalize plans, let's be sure with the words that we're using that we explain exactly what limited means specifically around the application process. So I look forward to learning a lot more. So thank you again. Reverend Cooper, that ends my question.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Ogren?
Thank you. I, we have often said during the pandemic that we're operating two school systems. So we're going to continue to do that. And, you know, when you look for the silver linings, this is one of them. I mean, I don't know that we would have gotten to this place at this point without that. So, I mean, to me, this is exciting. It goes forward to meet needs of all kids, because we have all heard from some parents who have said that "virtual learning works for my child." So providing for needs of children, which is what we're all about, seems to me that we're continuing that, we're growing that. I'm excited to see that, especially in a variety of learning environments, which y'all hit on so well. I think that you don't want to just imagine a child sitting in front of a computer six hours a day, which is obviously not going to be the case. And so knowing that there's going to be a variety, I think, is so important. But we are also, to me, one of the positives is that there are students who have left Henrico looking for this resource elsewhere. They're Henrico citizens. They've had to go find it. They've left us. We're going to hopefully get them back, and we're going to be able to meet the needs of those children that heretofore, for whatever reason, we weren't able to. So I think that's great for the citizens of Henrico. But it's also listening to the feedback from parents that have been asking for this. The one thing I do want to know is, you talked about extracurriculars, and I know this is going to be a question that comes up pretty soon, is how will those kids be able to participate in the extracurriculars? How will that work? I think enabled, in order to be a well-rounded child, you need that option. And you said your connected school culture, which I think is such an important term in your presentation. But explain to me more, how will that happen?
Sure. It's excellent question. So we know this is at the forefront of the minds of many of our students and parents. And so students at the HVA are able to participate in middle school athletics, as well as all Virginia High School League athletics and activities through their zoned school. And so they would be doing that in person at their zoned school. The HVA itself will then have additional extracurricular and co-curricular clubs and activities for students to participate within the HVA itself.
So would students have the option of, like, if for a club, for example, going to school in person for that club, or there might be a virtual club as well and activities that, sorry, that those kids could participate in? They would have that choice?
They will have a choice. There are certain specific VHSL activities and athletics that have to be done in person at the home school. But then the goal is for the HVA to then create a whole lot of additional opportunities for students to continue to engage.
Right. I got it. I'm going to just want to add one piece to that. I think your answer was comprehensive and hit the nail on the head. But I do want to just note that students who would be enrolled in HVA, who would want to participate in VHSL, would need to meet VHSL requirements for participation. So that's a given. I just don't want to make any assumptions that you would be able to participate just by virtue of being in HVA. You also have to meet all the other requirements. And so, yeah, and I think, as was stated, knowing that, you know, with HVA will come that school, feeling of school community and culture, which means a robust offering of extracurriculars that are probably based on student desires and needs. Students themselves may be a part of generating various virtual clubs and so on, just like we see happen in any comprehensive school.
Yeah, I think that's amazing. But to me, that, you know, being able to provide this opportunity across the county to any student who's interested, it's going to be very interesting to see how long the list is. And I'm hoping we don't have to turn kids away. But the one thing I would hope to see is that, obviously, this is a new initiative. I hope that we will be obtaining frequent feedback from the students, staff, and teachers as we go forward, because obviously, anything new, we're going to work out the kinks in the beginning and then make improvements as we need to. But so how do you plan to get that feedback? You're all shaking your heads. So I assume you're doing it, but you must have a plan on how that feedback will be done.
Well, as Ms. Bostain said earlier, we are going to start with focus groups. That's, we're starting that next week, in which we're getting feedback from multiple stakeholders. And then also, we just hired our principal, who's going to be actively involved in this process, who can also put together a task force once we have the students and staff and so forth, so that we can receive that frequent communication. Because as we know, we may be missing something, and we are going to be missing something. So we can tweak plans as the year progresses.
Now, will this have a special advisory committee or parent committee? Have you envisioned something along those lines that, as far as a group that meets frequently or anything like that?
I believe we're going to have a multitude of opportunities for that, Ms. Ogren, and we're going to need it. We see this as a collective effort and a partnership. And as Dr. Champ shared, the principal is going to be a key component of starting that connection, not only with the HVA community, but communities across our school system. Because we know families may elect into this option this year, or may not elect into this option this year. They may be considered in the future. And so that's something we want to stay in touch with, and you bring up a good point. And that is something, as soon as we welcome that principal, we're going to quickly start to establish beyond our global focus.
Right. Literally hit the ground running, getting this going. But I think it's exciting news, and it really does meet the needs of students that, I think, will, you know, I've heard from them, so many students who need this and want it. So I'm excited that we're moving forward, especially in this quickly as we are. So that's great. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm finished.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogren. Ms. Shea?
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. It is wonderful to see all of y'all back at the podium. Thank you for bringing this forward to us today. Can you articulate for us how this standalone academy improves on the structure we had this year in which virtual was interwoven with the home school?
Another excellent question. And I think, as you alluded to, Ms. Shea, you see diverse representatives here as on our Planning Committee. And our school principals and leadership teams have been key, and also with our families and communities, in providing that feedback. And we know that as we continue to make preparations for HVA to launch in September, we must review that data and the overall experience. Well, I think we have about nine weeks to go. So as we continue to round out this unprecedented academic year, taking the feedback in our students, their feedback will be a key component of the data that we use to inform what adjustments we need to make to the virtual space in the Henrico Virtual Academy.
And by having a standalone--
I just want, I think that's an excellent answer. I wanted to add one point to your excellent question, Mrs. Shea. And I think predominantly, we see a hybrid model being currently used. And so, you know, while it's incredible, the job our schools and our teachers have done in providing an excellent experience is that balances the needs of the in-person and the virtual learners, often simultaneous, and that's what I mean by hybrid. This eliminates that structure as the predominant way we're meeting student needs, and so it allows us to focus. You use the term, you're running two school divisions in one, Mrs. Ogren. And so certainly from the division level, that's what we're doing. But then it doesn't leave the classroom teacher running two kinds of classrooms at once. So that would be the predominant difference and where we think we can really leverage the best practices in virtual learning for this purpose and the best practices for in-person learning for the other.
Thank you. That was going to be my follow-up question, because I know a lot of, a lot of families in my district have, and teachers as well, have expressed concern about just the lack of sustainability that their mode we're in now. And so it sounds like that this standalone academy will be a lot more sustainable for both our families and our teachers. And Dr. Cashwell, you make a great point. And the virtual academy isn't necessarily going to be trying to replicate the school day of an in-person experience. It's instead going to be leveraging best practices of the synchronous and asynchronous components for our students. And I think that's so important. A related but different angle question, we have Virtual Virginia available for our students and families. And I know from-- And I know from a school division, kind of what the benefits are of of having, you know, keeping our own students. But for our families, what is the benefit in enrolling in HVA as opposed to enrolling in something like Virtual Virginia?
Thank you. Excellent question. So we currently enroll students in Virtual Virginia courses, which is different from Virginia Virtual, which I know that naming doesn't help. But we enroll our students in Virtual Virginia courses in cases of extreme scheduling conflicts, or if they wanted to pursue a course that their school was not running that academic year. And so this would be an opportunity for students to be able to take all of their courses through the HVA.
And I would add to that, while typically, the way in Henrico County Public Schools, we've seen students enrolled with us leverage Virtual Virginia is typically course by course. We have seen in other school divisions, and particularly during the pandemic, where virtual learning in many school divisions haven't offered their own virtual learning program. They have had students in their school division participate fully in Virtual Virginia. They do have a program like that. You know, we believe we have the capacity to be able to serve our students within HCPS in this way, and that helps them, again, maintain the connection to their homeschool for athletics. That would be a benefit that you wouldn't have if you enrolled fully. You know, certainly, I think there are some quality and programming pieces through the Virginia Department of Education's Virtual Virginia. And we'll probably continue to leverage that course by course as needed for students, particularly those who are may have a specific course need. But when we think of full-time enrollment or being fully virtual, I think the benefit of being able to offer it this way through HVA is sort of that feeling of a cohesive school community that will work to create some of those extracurricular pieces and, you know, just again, that that community connectedness.
Thank you. I really hope some of our our families that have been pursuing fully virtual, I really hope that they will take note of our academy and come back to us.
And I think the Virginia Virtual is actually a private program that has a similar name to the Virginia Department of Education's Virtual Virginia. And so absolutely, to your point, there are a number of others out there like Virginia Virtual, where they're fully comprehensive online. And so do hope any Henrico students who have leveraged that might consider our HVA.
Thank you. And my apologies for getting my words mixed up on two very similar programs. Just a couple more questions. So you shared that the application would be available in early May. Do we and what do we anticipate for the deadline to apply? Just ballpark, so just so our families have an idea of the window that they're looking at to make this decision.
We're using them, and thank you for the question. We are using the month of May to for students to apply so that they can be notified before the school year has concluded. So by the beginning of June is when they would be notified.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful for our families that are listening. I think it's also important to note, as a division, unlike some of the divisions around us, we're we don't have a decision, you know, that every family is making a decision of A or B. Our default is that our students are going back to the building five days, full day instruction with a teacher. This is a separate program that families can choose. But other, unlike some other divisions, we're not polling every single family as to what their plan is. This is something that they're going to have to proactively apply for, correct?
Absolutely. And we really want the families to discuss with their child, what's the best option for them, using that family self-reflection tool? Because we want to make sure that we're meeting their needs with this option.
Absolutely. Thank you. How are the applications assessed? Is it is it merit? Is it lottery? Is it? Can you give us an idea on?
I'm happy to take that question. To alleviate them trying to figure out who's going to step up, though I know they all are clear on the answer. So this is not acceptance based on the content of the application. The application allows us to have your information, so we know who you are, where you live, and what you're that you're interested in being a part of our academy. And again, the self-assessment tool, we're relying on families to use with a student on their own to determine before they make application and interest that this may be a good fit. It'll help them understand that. But our intent is everyone who's interested to be able to look at those applications and and make a match for our virtual academy. And so, you know, we're not intending to limit the number of seats at this time. We're really going to base it on interest. We want families who want to be able to make this choice to meet their needs. Again, we're going to ask if they think about, is this the right fit for me? And that they make a commitment to it for a year, because, you know, obviously, we want to be able to provide the best services possible. And that means allocating our staffing and our resources accordingly, once we have interested applicants and we're prepared to do that. When we think about sustaining this academy into the future, there may be some limitations on capacity. But when we realize that we are still potentially, as we enter the fall, in a situation where COVID is still present and is a factor that may cause individuals to want to opt into this virtual environment, who might not be opting into it otherwise. So health conditions still play a role in that. So this is a viable option for those who might have that need. It may be that they can be served within their homeschool in person. You know, again, the default is you're an in-person learner. If there's some reason that may not meet your needs, but maybe it's a health concern or condition, there may be an option that better meet your needs. And it may be HVA. It may be something else that you work with your principal on. Or maybe outside of health concerns, this is just an excellent option for you because of the way you learn and where you've found success. And so you'd make application. But recognizing, particularly with health concerns still abound with COVID, we certainly don't want to limit attendance here, and we'll work to take the applications we receive and and hopefully be able to accommodate those.
I think that's so important for our families to hear. As Ms. Atkins pointed out, the word limited has been used in some of the preliminary advertisement, if you will, of this. And so for families to hear that we don't intend to have a set capacity. We're going to work as best as possible to meet the desire and need. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Wonderful. And so really, we're looking at families who feel like that this is a good fit for their learner and that they are able to commit to the full year. Fantastic. And then the last thing I'll just point out from conversations within my community and with Dr. Cashwell and team about this, I just want to reiterate that this is much like opting in, in some ways, to a specialty program. And it operates independently. It's an independent school. It has its own teachers. It has its own administrators. It's it's truly a school within itself. And so that's definitely different than what we saw this year. But as as you outlined for me at the beginning, it has its own benefits. And so thank you all for launching into the kind of the unknown, into the unknown we go with this. But this year was, as Ms. Ogren pointed out, certainly a great catalyst for some some pieces like this that we have been looking at for years.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Consella?
As a matter of fact, I do still have some questions. I didn't think I'd have any left by the time my colleagues asked them all. But actually, I do have some. So let's start with how we got here. I know that the pandemic brought us here, and and we had to have virtual learning. And so our response with this virtual academy, is it our independent initiative or is it a mandate?
This is an independent initiative. The only mandate post-pandemic we've seen recently is that we must offer in the fall full instruction in person for all students. And certainly, we intend to comply with that. And in fact, we encourage a return to in-person learning. This is very much an optional offering for families. I think Mrs. Shea categorized it well. If you think of a lot of the specialty offerings that we have, this would be one more of the many specialty offerings. And something that we were actually aiming for pre-pandemic. And so certainly, we were able to gain some traction and speed to getting to where we are today, silver lining of the the circumstances. But, you know, even prior to the pandemic, whether it was students taking piecemeal courses virtually, or, you know, we we see families leave to find these options for a fully virtual program privately, we knew this was something that there was demand for and that would meet the needs of students that we were not currently able to meet.
Okay. Thank you. What does the hiring process? I know we touched on it a little bit up here. What does the hiring process look like potentially for the virtual academy? For example, will teachers currently teaching virtual due to COVID with accommodations be given any priority when staffing the academy? And or will teachers currently excelling at the virtual teaching model be recruited? Or is it just an open application process with HR?
Thank you for your question. This is an open application process. We're looking for highly qualified teachers who've been successful in the virtual environment. The in regards to the folks who had accommodations, those expire at the end of the school year, and anybody can apply. Was there another part of your question?
Just about the teachers who were really currently excelling and have found their niche, just like this will be a model that certain students have excelled.
We absolutely, I'm sorry.
Well, just wondering if they'll be actually recruited versus just open application?
We are, we will definitely ask for recommendations from principals about teachers who have been very successful in this environment. But of course, we want them to be interested in applying for the position.
Okay. I was I was just wondering how what the process looks like. And then if the deadline for applications with families, if if their process is taking place during May to be notified early June, then would the timeline for teacher applications, would it differ from the normal June 1th HCPS timeline that we normally have? I would imagine we have to know what students we have to have first, and then we'll staff it. Or will it be simultaneous? Or what do we expect?
I think we'll be able to accomplish some of that simultaneously. You know, we certainly want to establish a baseline staff, but we understand that our staffing needs may continue past that student deadline, because once we understand more what our student body will be, that'll help us understand additional staffing needs.
Do we anticipate being short any staff? I mean, I'm just thinking about the timeline of, you know, a lot of times, our building level leaders in person, brick and mortar, will be, you know, arranging their staff component, staffing complement for the fall. And this sounds, are we prepared to deal with that and respond to whatever shortages present themselves?
We are. And I think that's one reason, you know, we're looking to end that process for student placement here at the end of May, because we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of both HVA and all of our other programs, both in-person and virtual. And so I think it's going to be, you know, in every year, we do see, we do monitor enrollment because, you know, enrollment happens all through the summer, new families move to Henrico. And so we're monitoring school-based enrollment by grade level and by course at all times. And we're always prepared to adjust those. And then we do a September 30 count and adjust again. So I mean, it's fair to say the process is fluid, but we hope by the end of May to have a good understanding of what the core enrollment will look like here and how that may have any impact on our individual brick and mortar schools, and we'll be prepared to adjust accordingly.
Okay. And then I had a question from a constituent about the additional cost, about the funding. Where are we getting the funding? Where are we getting the funding? And how much do we expect this to cost additionally?
By and large, this is, you know, these are students who are already enrolled in Henrico schools. And so it's simply a matter of really reshuffling the way we allocate resources that are already budgeted for and planned for for these students. So the virtual learning itself doesn't add an additional cost. And so when we think about some of the costs to get this up and running, you know, you see core staff we already have on hand doing the planning, the implementing. And so in the end, once we understand more what student enrollment looks like and how we can manage that from an administrative perspective, there may be some additional costs that we believe we can, you know, again, it's just a matter of shuffling current allocations to meet student needs. But we'll keep the board posted should there be an additional cost. But I think it'd be minor administration pieces, but no additional cost for the programming itself for students.
And then, I guess, in line with access and opportunity, will the mid-year admission, how will mid-year admissions be handled, the same way as they would be handled in brick and mortar? Whereas if a student suddenly transfers to Henrico County or moves to Henrico County, would they get admission to the virtual academy?
I mean, I think that's something we're going to have to look at with capacity to see where we are. It may be that we're not able to admit any students after a certain point. It may be that we are. I think that's something we're going to know once we've done the initial enrollment period, to understand exactly, again, what our capacity looks like in our staffing.
And then forgive me if I missed it. Will the school day essentially be the same, if you will, the bell schedule at the K-12 HVA? It will not, correct?
I think there will be some similarities, but remembering this is a standalone campus, and it's a K-12 experience that goes from elementary to high school. So we aren't necessarily mimicking the in-person experience like what we've seen some of in this hybrid scenario where teachers are duly teaching both. And so depending on the grade level, depending on the course, depending on the way the synchronous and asynchronous time are blended, you'll see some some unique scheduling there.
And then I would just ask that we continue, I know mental health and the social emotional learning has, it's it's a part of so many of our conversations. It's on everyone's mind. I would just ask that we continue to keep that at the forefront as we plan with this initiative. And then the last, save the, the most interesting question for last. As I listen to the presentation, and I know that at least Fall 2021 is going to be more of an open enrollment versus, but it's still going to be a one-year commitment, but it's going to be open to all of our students who find that it's a better fit for them. And I start to think about capacity and enrollment continuing to be a moving target, and how the impact of the virtual academy on capacity, and perhaps would it further delay comprehensive redistricting? Because the board had said we would revisit it Fall 2021. So I'm just wondering, do are we, do we have a way to perhaps monitor that impact? Or is that something anyone else is thinking about at this time?
Very, an interesting question and an excellent one. You know, one thing that we've learned throughout the the start of the pandemic is that our enrollment is what we would call unstable, right? So a lot of the predictive models we use just don't help us right now to understand what enrollment patterns are going to look like. We certainly remain ready to meet student needs. But when it comes to being able to determine which buildings might be at capacity, over capacity, what we knew in, you know, March prior to that initial emergency closure to now has changed a bit. And so certainly, the virtual academy enrollment may be higher this year with COVID still a condition to consider when the school year starts. You know, hopefully, or fortunately, you know, as time moves on, we may see that that's not an impact. But what we know about the way students learn and families' needs and desires with various options may change some of our enrollment patterns. And we may see that the virtual academy is something that continues to draw a larger number of students. And we'll monitor that. I think we'll know a lot after this school year. Certainly would want to be proactive as we approach the school year after that, post-COVID, hopefully, to garner interest from our families to really understand what that enrollment look like, looks like, and how it might impact capacity or any enrollment trends and patterns that we've seen. And so I think that's something that's going to be very prudent to watch, along with just general changing conditions in our communities.
I think, you know, Dr. Cashwell, Ms. Consella brings up a a great point. You know, I think it will largely depend on how big the enrollment in virtual academy is, right? But, you know, if we do find it to be of significant size, where that needs to be considered, would it be possible at that time to survey the families who are in HVA to see if they enrolled due to health concerns, which we would assume would then likely return back to their homeschool following years? Or did they enroll due to desire for that learning path? And that may give us, again, we're going to have to look at kind of all the numbers in the story they tell to decide what we're, how we're going to move forward in the fall. But that may be a path that we're able to dissect that HVA data a little bit if it's of significant size.
Absolutely. And then once the, you know, knowing going into the year, they opted in for one reason or another, and then knowing as the year progresses, you know, perhaps it wasn't a health reason, they came into the virtual academy, but they found it's not a fit and don't want to return, or the interest of those who haven't enrolled who want to enroll. So we'll just be definitely staying tuned to those numbers, reporting those to the board as we're able to for various pulse checkpoints. But absolutely understand that when it comes to looking at enrollment, this is a significant factor to consider.
Yes, I just thought I'd get it out of my head and share it with others, to put it on your radar since it's online. And just thanks again to the team for this presentation. I look forward to us moving forward with HVA. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. So I'm serious. I don't have that many, because she asks like all of my questions. But but can you speak to real quick? So I know Dr. Cashwell just really kind of briefly alluded to the whole one-year commitment, and we know that that's our goal. But but I'm aware of the family self-reflection tool. But let's just say, my circumstances have changed drastically, that I I found out that this doesn't work for my child, and my child really wants this doesn't work for my child, and my child really wants to abandon, you know, virtual academy. What's the option to the family?
We're going to work with any family for extenuating circumstances. And I saw Dr. Champ coming forward, and I don't want to take that response of she's got anything to add there. But as is always the case, you know, when it comes to any programming that a student may opt into, our administrators are prepared to work with our families and understand extenuating circumstances. We do ask that this commitment be taken seriously, just as you would in enrolling in any of our specialty programs or centers. Because, you know, there are a number of factors that are important when we think about meeting student needs. But we'll certainly be prepared on a case-by-case basis to work with families as their circumstances may change.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. So piggybacking on my colleague, Ms. Consella's just kind of asking you all to make sure that the social-emotional support is major. Can you speak to it for me real quick? Meaning, can I feel confident that we're going to exhaust every opportunity to have a robust offering of social-emotional support to our students in this program?
Absolutely. And so our plan for social-emotional supports for next year in general, whether it be within this program or in-person, we've been working on that all year. So we will continue through this program, through the HVA, to provide SEL curriculum at each grade level, that is research-based, like we do with our in-person learners. And we will continue to have school-based mental health teams serve the HVA with our school counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers. So they'll serve that in the same capacity that they would in-person school as well. And we do recognize that not everybody's experience in the past year has been the same. And so we want to make sure that any of our SEL work and our response not only recognizes that, but honors each student's unique experience. And so as part of our initiatives for next year, with in-person learners as well as our HVA students, we are, we have been working to prepare for that response and for the return to students, really throughout this year, to make sure that we're prepared to identify need very proactively, and then continue to respond to that need. So that will continue to take place through the HVA, as well as in our in-person schools.
I really appreciate that, because I think it's important for families to hear that we are just as in tune, we are just as conscious and aware of, aware of what's going on with the needs. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have any questions? Well, thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you very much to the entire HVA planning team for the efforts that have gone into the work thus far and all that's ahead of us.